This is the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting Augusta Charter Township Planning Commission, and we're gonna start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So from the Secretary of General, call that the order, six thirty.
Yep.
Uh, we're gonna move on to a roll call. Uh, Albers.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Gifford.
Here.
Spence.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
York. Here, full commission and a quorum. Uh, also attendance, we have Mr. Pizzotti from our planning consultant, Carl Alwarten Associates. Move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, comments?
So I have two comments that I'd like to discuss and have Keith take to the board. One, obviously, we get through site plan review for the cell ordinance, but as I've read our wireless communications facilities in our master plan, I think there's some things that we can update. Um, so I'd like to give if that's something that we can discuss on the commission or Keith takes that to the board and asks if that's something that we can pursue with Carl Alwarten. And then the second thing is the data center. So currently, and Mr. Pizzotti, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that the township at least would have the ability to tailor some of the permitted uses and general industrial. Um, I think it's done in other townships. So maybe discuss revising the permitted uses to make something that is more, um, accommodating to the character of our township. But that's great.
So I, we, we can add those as discussion items.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, we'll make item seven C, uh, just generic of all the wireless ordinance. And then item seven D, uh, we'll call it, I guess, uh, L I G I uses.
Sure.
Uh, however, you, you referenced the data center and I, I think I.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to.
I wanna clarify that I don't think what you're talking about is the data center.
No, not at all.
Uses that are allowed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, forty's left.
So, uh, yes, okay. For discussion only.
Correct.
And then, um, we can determine if there's further action that we want to pursue, uh, as far as the planning consultant may be making revisions or if trustee Gifford takes it to the township board for discussion or something like that. All right. Are there any other, uh, additions, comments or changes? So if those propose, uh, those proposed additions, is there a motion, uh, with those proposed additions or without?
I'll make motion.
With the proposed addition?
Yes.
All right, is there, uh, so a motion by Wolf, is there support?
That's second.
Support by Witt. Uh, Albers?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Gifford?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Uh, Witt?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
York, yes, motion carries unanimously. Uh, move on to item five, approval of the minutes. Uh, these would be the planning commission meeting minutes from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, regular meeting. Uh, are there any, uh, changes, corrections, addition, discussion on those minutes?
I have none.
Anything on the minutes? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Albers to approve, is there support?
All support.
Uh, support by Commissioner Hamel, uh, Albers?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Gifford?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Witt?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
York, yes, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we'll move on to item seven A, site plan review for the proposed wireless communications power at ninety-six seventy-five Willow Road.
Pardon me? Just get public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the item six on the agenda is public hearing and, and there are no public hearings, uh, scheduled for this evening. There are some, uh, of the planning commission packets on the chair in the back of the room and also just some single agendas. The agenda's in the packet if anybody's interested anymore. So to, uh, to introduce society, we're here for our site plan review of the cell tower tonight. The special land use was approved by the township board. It would be at the August meeting, I don't have the date off the top of my head. So the use has been approved and what we're here for tonight is to discuss the site, the site plan review and the particulars, the details of, um, how it would be constructed, driveways, the physical aspects of it. And so with that, uh, Mr. Pizzotti, is there anything that you have by, by way of introduction?
Yeah, so as we all know, some revised site plans were submitted to the township regarding some comments from the June meeting. Uh, the main comments that I had regarding the site plan was residential setbacks and revised fencing updates. Uh, because during that last June meeting, the co-s fencing was barbed wire and it was at a, I believe, a shorter heights than what was currently allowed. So with that in mind, uh, revised plans have been provided and the fencing details have been provided as well. They weren't included in the last plans, the middle, uh, you can find those on sheet three of the revised site plan. And, uh, instead of barbed wire, the applicant has instead amended the fence to be ten feet in height and removed barbed wire. So, uh, some of my comments on the last review was first of all, the planning commission approval for barbed wire, but since no barbed wire proposed, that's, uh, site plan criteria has been removed from my review as well as the fencing details consideration. My last site plan comment was regarding the residential setback, uh, as with the special land use requirements that need to be included in the site plan, uh, the nearest residential setback, uh, needed to be called out. So on sheet two there at the top right, the proximity map, you can see that the applicant has provided distances to the nearest residential structure, which is four hundred and thirteen feet, which do meet ordinance requirements. So, uh, my final, uh, site plan review comments that are outstanding. First of all, include, uh, the Wayne County, or Washington County approval of work within the right of way. What we can do with this, as since permitting with Washington County can be a lengthy process, is again, include this as condition of approval, which would require the applicant to provide, uh, Washington County Road Commission approval for that right of way work for any building permits can't be signed off on. Uh, the second op, uh, the second, uh, criteria would be the, uh, Towns of Fire Department approval of site access and circulation uh, to ensure that there are, um, there's adequate access and maneuverability around the section of, uh, emergency required, uh, emergency services there. Uh, the township engineer has also provided, um, a letter of conditional approval that has been included in your packet. The applicant will need to, uh, submit plans to Hennessy regarding those items before also we could, um, fully approve the plans. And the third item for consideration is as the planning commission, uh, you must, according to the ordinance, uh, grant a landscape deviation for the cell tower as right now, um, they have still be subject to the landscape requirements of the ordinance. However, as you can see on the proximity map I provided in my reports, the site is surrounded by, um, a lot of trees. So, uh, it is my opinion that, uh, the commission should grant that, that deviation, uh, 'cause if they were to add trees, there really wouldn't be any other, uh, visual, um, difference between the two of them. So, um, besides that, um, in those three conditions, we would recommend approval of the site plan with those, uh, conditions obviously attached in the motion.
Okay, I, the, the comments that you just made, I wanted to clarify, uh, as far as the setback that you said is, is shown here. You mentioned sheet two, but I wanna clarify, I think it's actually on sheet three where it shows the four hundred and thirteen feet, uh, from the tower to the house, just so everybody look, we're all looking at the same, same thing here.
Okay, so yeah, it is on sheet two and three. On sheet two, there's that proximity map where it has the little asterix there and also yes, on sheet three, on the left-hand side, it also has that four hundred and thirteen.
Oh, I, okay, the, the inset map up in the, in the left-hand corner, all this stuff, all right. Um, and then I wanna clarify, is there, uh, along the road, uh, you didn't mention water resources. So that's just a, a road ditch that's under company terrain, so does that still fall under the, uh, I believe, does that still fall under the, uh,
Commitment Road Commission?
The road commission?
If it is just a ditch and yes, they would need to get a right-of-way permit to, um, pretty much show that all the work that they are conducting is gonna preserve that ditch as it is. And if there is a back drain that is located there, then yes, they would need water resource to issue approval as well.
Okay. All right, is the position here this evening? Sir, can you come out and get your name?
George Lake.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I, if you wanna pull a chair, I'll probably really.
Oh, that's fine, I can stand.
Wally Haley, whoa, a little loud. Uh, Wally Haley, uh, Haley Law Firm here tonight representing North Star Tower.
Um, can, do you mind spelling that for me, please?
H A L E Y.
H A L E Y and Wally.
If you wanna get technical, Wallace, W A L L I C.
Can you embrace that name, it's a nice name.
Uh, I, I've lived with it a long time, I'm pretty good with it. And so, uh, Joe and I have had numerous discussions and I reviewed actually the video from the chair. Uh, a lot of the comments made during the, when you went through the site plan, uh, during the June meeting. A couple of things that Joe didn't mention we provided was, uh, the generator, uh, specs that someone raised a concern about. Um, one of the concerns also was the FAA. That's been applied for, uh, if you go to the FAA's website right now, they're, they have a big warning sign across the top that everything's really backlog, so we don't have the final approval from the FAA.
I, I didn't think we needed FAA approval because the tower, like, I thought I read that in the packet that it wasn't.
You still have, you still apply, then it give you a no top, no, no hazard deviation determination.
Gotcha.
So they're just running way behind evidently on, on all of that stuff. So, uh, but if there's any other issues or questions that any of the commissioners would, would like asking, I'm more than happy to share.
All right, thank you, Mr. Haley. Uh, yeah, I, I have a number. Well, let me ask, uh, let, let me back up, uh, here for a minute. So this is, uh, this is a site plan review, this does not require, um, public comments are not required as part of that as they are in the, uh, rezoning or a special land use. Um, however, as Chair, I have discretion, uh, to allow that. Um, as I mentioned, the special land use was approved, so as far as the location goes, that's set. That's not what we're here to talk about tonight, we don't have any control over that and, and that's not what's gonna be decided tonight. You know, we're talking about the physical parameters of this. Um, however, I note there's been a lot of concern about the project, uh, you know, at various meetings and whatnot. So I'm gonna exercise that discretion and open the floor to public comments. So again, I apply the same three-minute limit that, that's been used throughout, uh, so if there's anybody that would like to make a comment, please, uh, come forward. If you could, uh, give us your name, please.
Craig Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Uh, my only comment or request, if, if possible, is that when this tower's erected, that there's some sort of, uh, something done with it, so it's just not a tower, that could be included in whatever.
Aesthetically pleasing.
I like that, I almost said aesthetically pleasing, so if something comes down in that.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience? Anyone else? All right, hearing none, uh, then we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, move on with the business. So I, I have a number of questions and comments, but I'll open up to the, to the planning commission if anyone has, has anything. Commissioner Wolf?
I have a quick question I didn't see in, in the package anywhere about end of life of the project. Uh, so I just kinda questioned that a little bit, uh, is that in there, did I miss that, or is that something you might be adding to us?
You mean the decommissioned plant, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
For instance, uh, if everything goes to satellites, I mean, that may not need, uh, towers, you know, in the future, that type of situation. What happens to that tower that was responsible, uh, and what would you plan for that?
Is that something that the township also could request and, uh, or now that this special land use has been granted, we don't really have?
I'm just looking for information.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
The, in the lease, which you have a redacted copy of, uh, there is a provision in there for removal of the tower when, when the tower is no longer in operation. And one of the, one of the requests that your folks made during the thing was a copy of the redacted lease or the lease. And so we could provide it to Joe, a, a copy of the redacted lease, pricing and everything else like that is out of there. But it does have, it, it does address, if you, if you look into it, it does talk about removal of the tower.
Thank you.
Upon termination.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Anything else, Commissioner? All right, is anyone else, uh, in the commission? Commissioner Albers?
Hey, okay, um, I have just a few questions. So, and the generator detail that you added from the last meeting, um, it does give the decibel readings when it's, there's no load, but can we get that number of what the load is when the generator is running?
It's on the spec sheet, it's fifty-seven dB.
That, but it says no load. So that's, that's the number when it's not running?
No, I, I think that's the number when it's running, it's, it's just without, I'm not an electrician, but I believe that's when it has normal operation without any stress or anything relevant to it. So if you were looking at a dB, it doesn't run at all normally. It only runs when there's a loss of power. So at, at that point in time, the, it's my understanding that it, it would be fifty-seven dB. And if you'd like, I can try to get you some clarification, give it to Joe.
Sure.
But, but, um, that's, it's my understanding, I, the gray houses have been doing this quite a while. It's, it's, uh, that fifty-seven dB is the, is the.
It covers all.
Generator running, otherwise it's just silent.
Okay.
You have no dB.
Okay.
At that point.
Okay.
If I could, Commissioner Albers, I had, yeah, I, I can't find it right now, but I, I noted the same thing because you mentioned. But on, uh, I mean, it's third or fourth page, uh, under sound enclosure, it does talk about fifty-seven decibels. Um, at twenty-three feet, oh, no load, it's right there. With an internal amount of silencer, so this thing has a, has an enclosure to it. Um, and what I can say is that it, because I looked, it's water cooled. So they generally run quieter than air-cooled generators. Most of what folks have at their home that, you know, we experience, I have one in my house, that those are air-cooled.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, water cooled generators, uh, for the size generally are quieter than air-cooled generators. That being said though, Mr. Haley, is when this thing is running and if it's under load, you'd still be subject to the township zoning ordinance. So if that sound, uh, and I, I don't, I didn't bring my copy of the ordinance, I don't know what it is.
I understand.
But, you know, if it's, if it's running and there, there's a complaint being to the township, it would have to be measured and then if, uh, it's louder than that, uh, you know, it would have to be addressed.
Understood. Uh, any other, too, let's think about it, too, when the, when the generator runs, we're all out of electricity.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not like the cell site is running without electricity.
Right.
That means the feed to the entire area is, is gone. So we have probably bigger fish to fry at that point in time than the generator noise, but, yeah, yes, they're always still bound by the, by the, by the ordinance.
And then how, I mean, I had this written down later, but since I'm talking about the generator, how will you power the generator? How will you fuel it? Because I think I read somewhere in here about, um, the underground, the, the things that you would do and to my, in understanding of the plans, there was nothing about, um, gas or diesel or whatever done. So how would that generator be powered?
To be honest with you, I'd have to look at the spec sheet to, to tell you. Usually they're either propane or diesel or, or, uh, a gas line.
Right, but it, I don't think it talked about, um, running a gas line.
Then it's either propane or diesel.
Yeah, if I, if I could, on page three, it, uh, there, and, and on page two of the site plan, it has a propane tank depicted. On page three, it's, uh, almost thousand gallon propane tank on a concrete pad.
Okay.
Which was discussed, uh, because that's consistent with what was in the, uh, preliminary.
Okay.
Grounds for the special land use, so that, that hasn't changed.
Okay.
Could I look specifically like that, at that, to make sure.
Okay. Sorry. My next question is wetlands, so there, in, um, our engineering companies report, there are wetlands in the area. So my request, if I, if this commission, um, has the power to make the request to the board or to you, your company, would be to have a third-party independent, um, company, like, whether it's Eagle or some other company, do a review of, of the area. And the reason I bring that up is because, you know, we've got another project in the township and knowing the people that, um, you know, they made a, a comment to me about how many other wetlands that they had found in the area of this project over on the west side of the township that was not depicted on either the map or the surveys that had been done.
Uh, no problem. I, I think Jesse, and I looked at the video, uh, not in grand detail to be totally honest, but, uh, the, I believe he discussed the National Environmental Protection Act requirements. Under federal law, all cell tower construction is by federal law. And under that, they have to apply and ascertain, it's called NEPA, and they have to go through the NEPA checklist with an independent consultant and they will look at issues like not only woodlands, but tribal Indian, uh, burial grounds. The, the list is very large.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that NEPA checklist or whatever, I presume can be provided to you guys at, at, at the point that it would be completed.
So before construction starts, there will be a survey?
No, it has to, it has to be. No, no one's gonna invest that amount of money without making sure they comply with federal law.
Okay. Um, landscape deviation, I don't like that, was something Mr. Pizzotti brought up. Do, I don't, what type of trees, are they deciduous trees or are they, um, like pines? Like, my concern is in the wintertime, are there leaves, are the trees going to fall there? And then the people that are directly around the area, are they gonna see? I know they're not gonna, they're gonna have to look up to see the top of the tower, but that structure at the bottom with the fencing and everything, is that gonna be completely covered?
I'm not sure exactly what type of species are around the project site in terms of evergreen or deciduous, but, um.
I guess maybe that would come out in the wetland survey or?
No, I don't think it would, to be honest with you, but I, it, it's a pretty dense woodlot. E- even if, even if the trees lose their leaves, uh, you're going to probably have a pretty good barrier in there. I, I drove it tonight before I came in there.
Okay.
And that was, uh, pretty obvious. I've been dealing with cell siteing for a long time. Tomorrow night I go wandering in open field and I'm gonna have a lot of people who are gonna talk to me about it. And so this, this site is, from my experience, is, is, as cell sites go, it's a, it's a good site. The, the natural wooded lot around it and it will provide substantial screening.
And just kind of based on Mr. Woods' comments about aesthetics, there is a cell tower that's on twenty-three South as you're driving to Toledo and they, they put, what I would, you know, like fake Christmas trees where you apply the things, can, is that something that your company can do?
No.
Is it a third party that you can ask to do that?
No.
Why?
Because it's a hundred and ninety some feet and I have not even heard of a tree being a hundred and ninety some feet.
Well, they did that to this monopole or this cell tower off of twenty-three.
I'm sure they did, I, I've done monopole or mon, they call them monopines.
Okay.
The term, uh, and they work very well in areas where there's woods. That a tower is a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty feet tall and it's barely above the trees. Doing this on a hundred and ninety some foot tower is not gonna hide anything. And to be candid, uh, the special land use was an approval for a hundred and ninety foot monopole and that's what they're gonna build. But even, even if it would have been a topic of discussion with the special land use and, and you guys had discussed it with Mr. Styles at North Star, uh, they wouldn't have done it just because of the size and the height of that. It works very well in, in certain applications, shorter towers, urban areas, you know, with a, with a tree line that, you know, is, is not significantly lower than the tower. In this case, you know, you've got a sixty, seventy foot trees in there and then you've got a hundred and thirty foot of tower above it. So that, that's a very different scenario than the one you're talking about on twenty-three going down toward Toledo.
Have you seen that tower?
I've seen a lot.
No, but have you seen that tower?
Uh, I probably have, I've been down twenty-three many, many times.
It's, it's, it's an also, it's on the edge though more, I guess, it's not, um, 'cause you can see the length of the pole, but it's completely covered with, with that, with those accessories.
Very, very familiar with it, if you look at, you drive into West Bluefield and you, and you.
But we're not West Bluefield here.
I, I know, but if you drive into West Bluefield and you look at the monopole tower or monopine tower at fourteen Orchard, it was a very early example, and unfortunately, they call that Wally's Valley. That was mine with a, dealing with West Bluefield. So, yeah, I'm very familiar, and there's some very good examples, don't get me wrong. But we, you know, they're in much shorter and much more limited sets of circumstances.
Okay. Um, I'm almost done.
No problem.
Uh, what height are, I know it's not gonna have to have the FAA light at the top because it's below those specs, but at what level are the lights going to be fixed to the tower and will they be positioned down?
Well, under two hundred feet, there's no lights.
Okay.
So as long as you.
No lights at all?
As long as the FAA determines there's no hazard to, to aviation, there's no lights on the tower.
Okay.
Unless it's the proximity to an airport, I mean, a big caveat that, you know, if you're close to an airport or something like that, the two hundred will, foot will may not apply, but in, in this particular case, it, you know, it should be determined no hazard of aviation.
Uh, last question is, I know we talked about the distance to property, but do we know if the distance to property line is at least ninety-seven and a half feet?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's in there also.
Says you're gonna have two LED lights at the tower canopy's port post for maintenance needs.
I believe they're referring to the actual, like, uh, maintenance lights of their.
Maintenance lights at the base of the tower on, near the cabinets, at, at sixty. And, and those are, those are not on go, those are turned on and off.
Yeah, that's what I said, only.
Oh, so when they're there doing work? Okay, thanks, trustee Gifford. Thank you, that's.
I was looking at site plan with trees, I don't look at what it mean. I've been by and there's pretty wood, if either your site plan here splits a lot of trees?
Probably is, the, the architect or the engineer drove, probably does a, a woodlot and, you know, no one did a tree survey and delineated every tree in there.
It's a mix of beech, cedar, cherry, cottonwoods, elm, maples, oak and pines. Joe, do we know the drive meets the fire department with, is that around?
As far as my notes, we haven't received comment yet from the fire department. So, uh, in terms of site plan approval, one of the conditions I would strongly recommend including in that motion is to have the fire department review and approve, uh, the circulation as presented. I will note that the width of the access drive does meet the ordinance standards for cell towers.
Do you have the floor, trustee Gifford, or anything else?
That's about it.
The only things I was seeing.
All right, so, uh, I begin, I, I have, uh, a few myself, but, uh, we'll continue on with anyone else on the commission. All right, um, go ahead and, uh, what, uh, what I'm looking at bookkeeping on your, uh, maintenance agreement, on page one and under, uh, section three, execution and recording, it lists the open county registered deeds, uh, it says a typo on page two, uh, I guess subset of that on number one, it does list Washington County, uh, registered deeds, so it, just something that needs to be cleaned up before it's, uh, it's done.
I'm not sure whether you'll send it to, to your township attorney, a lot of times the township attorney reviews those documents because the township signs it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't think you have a signature line on it, I don't know that, uh, necessarily needs, that, that township, I, I don't think the township needs or want, probably wants to be a party to it. When Mr. Styles was here, uh, my point was, we, we wanted to see what that was, what it covered, uh, so that from, again, from the ordinance enforcement aspect, we, we know what, uh, what's been agreed to and then, you know, because that, that's post-planning commission, you know, once this thing is either approved or not approved, it's out of our hands, but then township administration has to deal with it and, you know, go through it, and, you know, it covers, you know, uh, maintaining landscaping, you know, et cetera, et cetera, you know, litter removal, yada, 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 you know, it seems pretty comprehensive, so the township has something to, uh, uh, hold petition to, you know, and, and going on in the future.
And to be honest, I, I don't know whether, you know, they will probably send that to the township attorney and, but they will make the decision on whether they want to be a party of it or not, and, uh, either way, we'll, we will work it out.
Yeah, that, and that's all, yeah, again, that, what, what the township administration decides to do on that, that's their, their purview, uh, but for us, it's about making sure we got a button-up package and that it can be dealt with going in the future, that's my concern. There's still a discrepancy in the, in the description here and I don't know, uh, Mr. Fazadi, in your, um, evaluation or party and loading, it notes maintenance personnel accessing the site approximately two to four times a month. That's on page three, but on page seven, item fourteen, the CWA comment notes that a third-party maintenance vendor will visit the site at least twice a year. That's a pretty big difference in, in frequency. It, it's not a lot of traffic one way or the other, um, I don't know, Mr. Haley, if you could clarify how often someone would visit.
The, 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 twice a year is, is a lot closer to being correct. Back in the day, there was a lot more visit by technicians and stuff, a lot, but like anything else, a lot of stuff, you would diagnose.